Quarter over town in Wintmore, Maine, Town Council meeting, Monday, August ninth, two thousand twenty-one at six P. M. First on the agenda tonight is public hearing, ordinance number zero nine dash two thousand twenty-one, providing for the amendment to ordinance number twenty-four dash nineteen seventy-two, chapter two administration, article four, public cemeteries, by adding the underline language and deleting the spread through language in section two twenty-three. Is anybody from the public that would like to comment on the public hearing ordinance, ordinance number zero nine dash two thousand twenty-one? If there is no one for that public hearing, I will now open the regular council meeting. Tanya, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Ben Twitchell.
Yes.
Jerry Carrion.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trahan.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Here. Uh, if you all could rise, please, and we'll recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So you have a motion, please, approve the minutes of previous meeting. Jeff West, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Peter Drappo. Uh, just your hands, all those who approved, please raise your hands. All those opposed, non-opposed. Um, communications, Board of Committee Appointments, Agricultural Commission, Kate Newkirk, reappoint. You want to do them all together?
Yes, please.
Okay. Planning Board, Mark Ward, reappoint. Agricultural Commission, Joseph Gravel, reappoint. Agricultural Commission, Sally Haywood, reappoint, is reappointment. Any of those people here that would like to speak?
Uh-uh.
They've all approved, they've all said that they would like to continue or...
As far as I know, yes.
So, okay, sounds great.
It's been moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Uh, I think it's just a short hands, right?
Correct.
If I could, on these four people, have a show of all those who approved, the reappointments. Any disapproved? No disapproval. Moving on to reports in committees and commissions. We'll start with the town manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, esteemed chairpersons. Uh, we've, uh, gotten through most of the summer. We're moving into the end of the summer and, uh, it's, it's still hot in here. Um, but we're, we're getting through it. Um, we do not have our clerk Lisa Gilliam back yet, but her recovery is starting to go a lot better. Uh, she had some bumps in the road, so we had hoped to have her back a little sooner, but it is going to take her the full eight weeks to come back. Um, in her absence, uh, I would like to extend my gratitude to Tanya for all the extra work she's been doing. Um, she's taken on all of Lisa's duties pretty much in one of the most busy times of the year. And I would also like to thank Audra Fleury and Linda Bard for taking over the notary duties while Lisa's been out. It's been a huge help to have everybody step up and just pitch in while she's gone. Um, the Fort Halifax Days two hundred fiftieth anniversary celebration is on schedule for August twenty-eighth. Uh, we dropped the, the parade. There just wasn't enough participation to really make it a, a great event. And the committee kind of determined that if it wasn't going to be a really nice parade, it was better not to do anything to add something that was subpar. Okay, so we're not going to do the parade. But, um, the good news is that we're going to have a proclamation from Susan Collins to open up the festivities right before the band takes the stage. Um, it will not be delivered by Senator Collins. It will be delivered by one of her staffers. Um, so we're looking, uh, forward to having that happen. And I'd like to thank Michelle Micho over at Senator Collins' office for making that happen for us. Um, summer is winding down. Summer fun camp finished up in the last week of July, so, uh, Amanda is taking some much deserved time off this week. Uh, we don't have her here, but, uh, summer fun camp, she did a great job, her and her staff, pulling it off when they really didn't know what to expect this year with the challenges we had with, you know, back when she was planning everything, we really didn't know what COVID was going to look like over the summer. So they all did a great job over there and made a success this year. Um, Public Works crews have been busy with the summer maintenance and vegetation clearing. I'm sure most of you have noticed that our back parking lot, um, has been cleared, that was cleared before, um, last week or a couple of weeks ago. Uh, they took out all the vegetation back there. In and of itself, that has improved the look of our parking lot immensely and gotten rid of a lot of the overgrowth and the birds that, um, mess up our cars and, and things like that. And I'm sure nobody could, uh, miss that we are now working on the parking lot as we speak. So they have started on that south side of the parking lot. Um, eventually they will move to this north part, but they're going to try to keep as much out of the way as possible and keep as many spaces open as they can while they're working on it. Um, we've been working with Bangor Savings Bank on a new payroll system. Uh, it's electronic payroll system, which should, once we get it set up, uh, it's a, it's a bit of a heavy lift getting it set up in the first place. And Tanya's been feeling the pain of that as well, but I'm trying to help her through it. Uh, that system will allow us to process our payrolls without having so many, um, handwritten papers in the mix. It'll put everybody on the same payroll system. Uh, so master timekeepers like Tanya, myself, we can see everybody in the system. Uh, we can run reporting out of it. Employees will be able to ask for their time off electronically, uh, so we don't have to rely on all these paper slips being passed back and forth. And since that system will directly feed evolution, we shouldn't have, uh, errors. You're always going to have some errors in payroll, but it should minimize it because there's not any hand entering going on. Uh, the only things we'll still have to hand enter are some of the exception type things that don't happen all the time. If someone has a stipend or a, a meal reimbursement or something like that, that a one-off thing that doesn't happen normally. Uh, but the vast majority of employees' hours will run straight to that system. So we're looking forward to having that and getting it moving. Looks like right now we're set to start using the new time clock down at Public Works, the second payroll in August. Um, and that would actually be this next week, wouldn't it? We may or may not be ready for that. I wouldn't be surprised if we had to delay one more time. But, um, that's just to make sure we've got all the bugs worked out. We don't want anybody getting paid incorrectly, which I don't really think will happen, but we could have some problems with all the tracking and getting things done correctly at first. Um, but we're, I'm hoping that that's going to really free up a lot of Tanya's time. She spends an entire day on payroll. She's getting everybody's payrolls handwritten and spreadsheets, paper time cards, and then she's having to compile all that, hand-enter it into the payroll system, and then we have to cut a warrant by hand after that to actually take care of everything going through the bank accounts. So, uh, project updates, we're still waiting on anything to happen with our phone system. Um, the equipment's all been ordered and everything, but the wait is on consolidated to actually find a time that can fit us in. Uh, they're pretty busy on their end as well, so, um, there's really no update on what's going on with that right now. Uh, other projects of note, Benton Avenue, um, they are getting towards the final completion stage out here with the water and sewer. Uh, we're looking probably to still be done that by the end of August. Originally, it was supposed to be the beginning of August. Um, if, most of you probably have heard, but if you hadn't, when they got up towards the school area, they were running into ledge when they were trying to dig the new line for the sewer pipe, and it was just slowing them down to about twenty-nine feet a day. Obviously, that would have taken forever. So we've rerouted, uh, reconfigured the work and should still be able to get it done in time to get some paving done this fall. Uh, we hope to have half of Benton paved this fall and the other half paved in the spring. Um, it'll be a brand new road when we get all done with it, but it won't be perfect until springtime comes. There's just not going to be enough time to feel the snow flies to get everything done. Uh, good news is we had to have our, our work committed, um, prior to September first in order to get the monies that we were granted from the state for that, and we will make that deadline. So as long as the work is committed, um, we've, we've met our burden. Um, Newtown website is ongoing right now. I should have the first draft of what the website will look like any day. Uh, Kim has been meeting with the department heads as to what everybody needs for content on the site, so, uh, things are progressing along there. Uh, Chaffee Brook, we did have, um, this isn't in my report, but it's because I just got it last week. Um, the Department of Alien Fisheries reviewed everything that we've got going on at Chaffee Brook Pump Station, and apparently they missed that we needed to have a mussel survey done, um, as far as the permitting goes. So now we have to do a mussel survey. Uh, they're bound to find them. Mussels are in just about every body of water in the state, and I wouldn't be surprised if they find them there. Uh, if they do, we'll have to relocate them. Um, so it'll be nice to pick them up and transport them somewhere else. I don't know how much this is going to cost. We'll have a further meeting with, uh, with Wright Pierce when Normandow comes back with their proposal for what it's going to cost and how long it'll take. They don't think there's going to be any seasonal requirements like they were with the, um, with the salmon study, uh, because there's no spawning or migration that we have to worry about. So hopefully they can just do it when they get the go-ahead. And, uh, Sunset Heights Sewer, uh, the survey cost has been renegotiated down to forty-three thousand from seventy thousand. So that's good news there. So you all had approved a maximum cost of seventy, and we're going to get it in there lower than that. So, uh, other than that, we're just moving along and can't wait to get Lisa back and, um, kind of looking for summer to, to be done. Um, I am getting quotes on the heat pumps right now that we have talked about in our capital plan. Um, the prices are looking better than what I anticipated. I've got another company coming out next week for quotes, and I'll bring that to you all when we've, when I've got all the quotes in order.
Did you mention, Erica, about Chaffee Brook two, the Senator King?
I'm sorry, I did not. Um, we have been approved, not approved, Senator King put forth Chaffee Brook as one of the projects that he is looking to have earmark funding set aside for. That's not a guarantee that we'll get it, but it is the first hurdle to have either Senator Collins or Senator King put it forth. Um, I haven't heard what Senator Collins recommended. I would guess that, that they coordinated and selected, you know, to get the most projects out there, they probably selected different ones, um, because it has to go for, before another committee in Washington and have those projects picked. But we at least have been put forth, and hopefully we can get some extra funding there.
Is there any lobbying we can do for, uh, obviously, that's a huge, huge...
Yes, and we won't, I mean, we won't get the majority of the funding from that source. But if we can get a million dollars out of it, that's a big chunk of it, and it would be great to get that money. Um, the bid lobbying was getting our own senators to put it forth. I don't know, um, as far as lobbying anyone in Washington, there's a, there's a committee that's made up of senators from all over the place that are going to be making those decisions. So we wouldn't really have any pull with anyone who's not representing Maine.
For him to have submitted it is a pretty good indication.
So I will, I will keep everybody updated as we get more information on that.
Yeah, okay. I'll say, Erica?
Yep.
I'll say, yes.
On their mussel relocation, when will, um, Wright and Pierce be able to tell us?
They're trying to set up, but they've already submitted the request to Normandow, who is the ones who have been doing all of our, um, water-based surveys. Uh, they did our bathometric survey and the one with the, uh, the diadrometus fish species. Um, so as soon as they can get a proposal back to Wright Pierce, Wright Pierce will contact us to set up a meeting. So they were, when I talked to Michael Stein over at Wright Pierce, he thought that potentially as early as this week, um, but hopefully by next anyway.
Do we just have to relocate mussels where the pipe has been away, or is there a perimeter?
I don't know the answer to that yet because I haven't seen the scope of what the state requires. Um, my guess is that when they did the initial review, someone just missed that piece of it, and someone probably just went back, um, to review all of the documents and went, hey, we missed this. That, that's my guess. Um, I, I don't think it's that it's a new requirement. I think just somehow it got overlooked in the permitting phase to begin with. But, um, not great news, but, uh, at least it probably won't be one of the more expensive things we have to do.
They're not real hard to catch.
No, they're not.
Good. Any other thing, Jerry, you need, any other questions from the council? As far as department reports, for now, it's on a just a as-ne basis of any department heads. At this point in time, would like to, uh, come up or have anything to say, that would be great. I know that Peter's here today. Peter, would you like to, uh, address the council?
Sure.
Okay, it's a good time.
Well, as you can, as you can all imagine, uh, all of our conversations right now about opening schools and reopening the schools, committee meeting this afternoon to talk about the plan, um, to reopen our schools. Um, the plan is built on the premise that we want to get all students back in school five days a week, safely back in school five days a week. Um, as part of developing this plan, we are looking at the guidance of the CDC, Center for Disease Control, the Maine Department of Education, and our own medical providers and nurses. Um, they highly recommend three layers of protection. And when I say recommend, um, last year, you know that it was a requirement, and they use the word requirement because we're in a state of civil emergency. We are not in a state of civil emergency right now, so the strongest words they can use are recommend. But when I have conversations with these individuals, these medical experts, they clarify with me, they make an analogy, what recommend means. So if I was standing on a cliff, a five-hundred-foot cliff with my six-year-old daughter, and I was to say to her, I recommend you don't jump off that cliff. It's not a requirement, but it's a recommendation because I know what's going to happen or what potentially will happen if she jumps off the cliff. If we don't put these mitigation strategies in place, we cannot guarantee the safest possible environment for our students and staff due to this new Delta variant that is gaining a lot of momentum. So this is, this is where we stand with that. Layers of protections that we're going to have, vaccinations, obviously, more people are vaccinated this year than they were last year. People continue to get vaccinated. Pool testing, which is a strategy that we will use in schools this year, it's very simple. Um, those who wish to volunteer participate in pool testing, it's as simple as taking a Q-tip swab, going around one nostril, the other nostril, stick it in the jar, it's done. You don't do it again for a week. Anybody who pool tests will not have to quarantine if there's a positive case. So it's a protection for them, it's a protection for, for us. It's early detection so that we can prevent the spread in our schools. The other piece, of course, is universal mask wearing because of the particulates, the small particles of the, um, that the Delta variant and COVID has. Um, you know, that's the one that's the most, that's the least popular with, with everyone. But if you take a look at the big picture and think about it this way, last year, we were hybrid every other day. This year, we'll be in school every single day. Last year, we had severe restrictions as to what we could do, mask all the time, inside and out. This year, we're recommending mask inside only. When you're outside, you don't need a mask. So there are many things that are very similar to a regular school year except with the mask and pool testing and the other things that we're, we're going to offer to keep everyone safe. So that is basically everything.
Yeah, how about, uh, like football games? I know that last year we didn't have any basketball indoors, school, school housing. I know the athletes won't have to have them. How about, uh, people that come in to watch the games? What's the policy on that?
Yeah. Outside is not going to be an issue, not going to be an issue. And so right now, the way it stands is outside, it's, you know, you're fine. We'll look at what happens as we continue with the season with, with inside, what that's going to look like. Yeah.
Pete, the, um, masks and pool testing, these are only requirement, they're not mandated. If a student comes to, to school and says, my parents don't have, tell me I don't have to wear a mask, where do we go with that?
Correct. So the recommendation that's being made is that the universal masking is a requirement to be in the buildings, to be in school. If you choose not to do that, then an option would be remote learning, virtual learning. We will offer that.
You are going to offer that initiative?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just read online that the state has come out and said that, uh, they, as far as the vaccination requirement, the school, so that, that, that's, that's going to be required, like, just like the flu shots and stuff like that, smallpox and all that. I read that online today.
You are absolutely correct. There is a vaccination requirement, um, for, for students. It's been there. Um, one of the things, one of the pieces of that vaccination requirement, and we're not talking about the COVID vaccine now, we're talking about regular vaccine, vaccinations that you need to have in order to, to attend in school.
Well, I understood that the COVID was being involved with that group.
No.
All right?
No, no.
University, pardon me?
You, the university, Maine is.
Not public schools.
Okay.
Probably hired, hired.
Yeah.
Faculty, yeah. The other thing that I want to mention, which is huge, huge, and I sent, I forwarded a, the email too, to Erica, I believe, right, is that we applied for a bit of waiver, um, in order to be able to use Escher funds or CARES funds to expand the elementary school for classrooms and a few bathrooms to give us more space. Um, we received, um, the okay for that to happen, which is huge for us. And the reason why that's huge, they don't give it us out. You have to, you have to demonstrate need, you have to demonstrate why this is something that's important. As we explained to them, the Escher funds can be used for certain things. One of them is for construction to allow for social distancing. As you know, we are a very efficient two-building campus right now, but in the elementary school, we have no additional classrooms. So if we wanted to expand for social distancing and keep kids further apart, we can because we don't have the room. This would allow us to build four extra classrooms on. We had a section in that school that when it was originally built, it was designed to have an additional wing. This would go right where that wing was designed to be placed. Two, uh, two classrooms on the bottom, two classrooms on top. In the future, if Windsor had to expand more, because great things are happening in this community and word's out, people want to come here. If you had to expand more, you just simply keep heading on and keep going out with it.
That's going to be engineered into this.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Absolutely. So, those are great things.
Peter, I just had a question. Is, have any of the preliminary designs been done for this four classroom? And how, second question is, uh, would, would the project have a time limit on when it would be shovel-ready?
This is one of those, this is one of the reasons why I applied for the waiver, is that we have to expend the money, um, by a certain date. And so in order to get it done and expend the money, it's, we can't, we can't waste time. And so...
Well, we had the design already for that extra wing.
You did.
That's already in place.
You did.
Oh, it is, okay.
That's already in place.
You did. But what, but what this is going to be is, it's not going to be that complicated, Ben. It's just going to be four classrooms and bathrooms to give us, to give us some extra room. Um, so in answer to your question, uh, the, we have some, we have rough drawings put on by the architect, but nothing, because we haven't hired them yet because we couldn't until we had some permission that we had this, this waiver. Now, this also needs to go before the board to make sure that, you know, they agree that this is good use of the Escher funds.
So any, any idea on when this project could be completed?
It'll be completed before September of twenty-four.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
As of it, yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Peter. As, as usual, thank you very much. Moving on to, uh, no more department reports, financial committee?
Yes.
Uh, go ahead.
Um, I heard that Public Works has hired a mechanic.
Yes. Um, I didn't get final word that he was, has actually gone through all of his paperwork.
Hasn't seen me yet.
Um, they have a person who has indicated their intent to come on board. Um, he was not answering an ad. It was one of those kismet-type circumstances. The ad has been out there. Um, one of our employees went to get their vehicle serviced, and this guy happened to work at the shop he went to, and they were just talking about this position being open. Um, this gentleman currently works as a mechanic at a mom-and-pop shop that does not have benefits. Um, his pay is pretty good, but he's forty-something years old, and the benefits is kind of something that interests him. The schedule is something that interests him, and right now, when he's not, uh, doing mechanic duty, he is out on the record, which he also doesn't like. So there were a lot of positives to potentially coming to work for us. Um, that said, I have not gotten any final word that he has been offered or accepted. Any other questions?
Not, not from me.
No, okay. Uh, then could I have a motion for the town report?
Second.
Department reports, financial committee report, and financial report. You got those first and seconds? I think it's to show hands, all those in favor, all those opposed. But now into the public comment. Is there anybody in the audience? We had no online submitted public comments for tonight about, is there anybody that would like the public comment of this particular thing? If there's no public comment, we'll move on. I think we could take a motion tonight for ordinance number 7-2020 and ordinance number 3-2021 to remain table.
You know, after you just go, you're just going to go right by him.
Hmm? We'll go right. You want to keep those?
You can go right to all business unless anybody else.
The table business, yeah. You don't have to make any motion if you want to.
Sounds good. All business. Ordinance number 8-2021, providing for an amendment for the Agricultural Commission Charter, ordinance number 04-2014, to include non-voting representatives from the Park and Rec Department and the Assessors Office. What's the pleasure of the council?
Second.
Jeff, and seconded by Ben. Any discussions?
No. Second, like Gravel.
Gravel.
Oh, Rocky, sorry. You get that, Tanya?
Councilman Gravel.
Any discussion on that? If there's no discussion, it's an ordinance, can I have a roll call vote, please, Tanya?
Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Ben Twitchell.
Yes.
Jerry Carrier. Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trahan.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes. New business, ordinance number 9-2021, providing for an amendment to ordinance number 24-1972, Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4 Public Cemeteries, by adding the underlined language and deleting the straight-through language in Section 232. What's the pleasure of the council?
Second.
Second.
Open for discussion?
Open for discussion.
I would like to add an amendment to that. We'd like to add monuments as well, make it the Cemetery/Monument Committee to take care of the monuments within the town. See, it's all, it all kind of works together.
Yep. So you want to make, you're making that, Jerry seconded it?
Yep.
Any discussion on the amendment? If there's no discussion on the amendment, we'll take a vote on the amendment first, please. So Tanya, can I have a roll call vote on the amendment? And Jeff, could you just state it again, please, just to make sure?
The Cemetery Committee will also oversee all the monuments within the town.
Tanya, I'm ready. Ready?
Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Ben Twitchell.
Yes.
Jerry Carrier. Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trahan.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes. Now, we'll vote on the original ordinance 9-2021 amended. Is there any further discussion on that?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Why are we going from five trustee to six? Just asking.
Jeff, you want to address that, or you want me to?
You can.
We had a lady that had applied this spring that wanted to be on the committee, and she didn't get the votes. And she still wants to be on it, and she's been volunteering all spring and summer at the Fort Halifax Cemetery, cleaning stones, cleaning up the mess there. And I asked her a bit ago if she still wanted to be on it, and she would. So I talked to Jeff, who's on that committee, and he agreed, so we're going to add a member to that committee.
And your chairman will become a non-voting member unless it's to break a tie.
Chairman of the trustee?
No, of the Cemetery Committee. The chairman of the Cemetery Committee will be a non-voting member to break a tie if need be.
So you got, that's going to be a little confusing.
No, because if, if the chairman's a non-voting member, there's still going to be five votes. You'll never have a tie.
Okay.
Unless one member doesn't show up, and then there's a tie, then the chairman will break that.
Right.
But the chairman also, with that committee, also has to oversee the monies and do all the requests and all that. So being an actual voting member probably isn't the best thing. It was kind of a thought process.
Who is the chair now?
Nobody right now.
Okay.
We're going to have a meeting and pick a new chair.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, ordinance number 9-2021, Tanya, can you have a roll call vote, please, on that?
Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Ben Twitchell.
Yes.
Jerry Carrier.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trahan.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes. Moving on to resolution number 34-2021, providing for the authorization for the town manager to accept $2,750 in state funding for the main state library for the Winslow Public Library. Any discussion?
Second.
Second, open by Jeff, seconded by Lisa. Could you comment on that, I mean? I know we have the information here, but I thought maybe the public would like to know.
We applied for state grant because we needed more book shelving for the library. It's, book shelving is very expensive. What we're looking at buying is about $4,000 worth of bookshelves because I got this grant along the cost to the town, about $1,300, which will come out of my equipment budget for this year. So we are at the point where we've removed any obsolete, unused items from the collection, and we're still incredibly tight, especially in the fiction section. And we don't want to get rid of books that our patrons are still reading, but we don't, but if we're going to get to a point where we can't buy any new books unless we get rid of something. This shelving will give us six double-sided shelves that we can then incorporate into the last empty space in the library, and it will greatly expand our ability to keep books that are still unused rotating and still into the collection.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're, we were fortunate that there's been some grant opportunities. We've been able to take advantage of this year, and we're going to keep looking, try and save the town as much money as we can.
Great. We appreciate it.
No problem.
Any other questions for Lisa at this point?
Yes. My question is, right now, the library is open three days?
Well, we're open five days a week. Three days a week, people can come in.
Yes.
Two days a week, we're still doing curbside pickup. That's because we can't serve people with curbside pickup because it's very labor-intensive at the same time that we're open. We were looking to phase in more days with the surge. We could have a lot of people with very young children who are afraid to bring their children in right now because any child under 12 cannot be inoculated right now, not only that, but under two years old. Masking is a little difficult. So we're seeing a lot of parents with young children using that curbside pickup, as well as certain adults who, for a variety of reasons, cannot be inoculated. So we're evaluating the situation, and we're hoping the numbers are going to start to go down, and then I have a schedule where we'll add another day, and then we're kind of slowly ramping up to give people time to get used to the changes. But right now, people can stay for two hours in the library. We're no longer limiting the amount of that time that they can use on the computer. And as I said, last, a few weeks back, we added the third day. So it's now Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, people can come in from nine to seven, and then Monday and Friday from nine, nine to six, I'm sorry. And then Monday and Friday from nine to six, we provide curbside pickup for everyone.
And obviously, Lisa, the meeting rooms are not in?
Not at the moment. We're working on trying to shift things around so eventually we can make them available. It's just that with all the moving parts right now, we really can't do that yet.
Yep.
Now, how about Saturdays? We used to have Saturday morning.
Not usually in the summer. I'm looking at the numbers, and I'm trying to evaluate for, once we get scaled back up, to maybe add that. We're having some staffing issues at the moment. Prior to the pandemic, we were open 46 hours a week. With my staffing levels, there is no other library in the state that has our level of service and the number of hours a week that we're open and the number of days a week. So I'm trying to figure out how to make that balance. And we rely on subs heavily, and since the pandemic, we are having a hard time getting subs to cover when we have open positions. I'm covering all the empty positions right now in August because we could not get anyone to cover our empty hours. I'm hoping that as things hopefully move back towards normal, I'll get more people willing to help us with that. But I'm down to three people, and none of them are available in August. So we're having some growing pains. I'm trying to come up with creative solutions on how to deal with it, but right now, I can't honestly tell you that I know when we're going to be open on Saturdays.
And subs are a paid position, too.
Yes, they are a paid position, but again, we relied a lot on people who were retired. And August has always been a hard time because a lot of people go on vacation in August. But as the pandemic hit, we started losing people. They just didn't want to take the risk when they didn't have to. So we're going to try and do a some advertising and see if we can get some more people on our list, but right now, it's very difficult.
Yeah.
And I can't tell my staff they can't go sick, get sick or go on vacation.
Right, of course.
So I'm sure you all understand, none of you, when you're, if you, when you're working, you don't want to, you know, be told last minute, "Oh, I can't get anybody," so vacation time I approved three months ago, you can't do.
Yep.
So, but I've been able to cover most of it for the time.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else?
Any other questions from Lisa? Thank you, Lisa, very much.
Thank you.
It's a resolution, so it's only a show of hands. All those in favor accepting. All those opposed, unanimous. Moving on, resolution number 35-2021 regarding property abatement request number 002-2021. So moved by Jeff, seconded by Lee, open for discussion. Any discussion?
I got a question. I noticed that on this one, that property tax abatement resolution is four, and they got the name of the person.
Your email.
I thought that usually we left that out.
That is, that's your email. That is not on the resolution because it does need to remain confidential, but I sent you all an email so that you would know who the, who's being discussed. You have already had the executive session to discuss this particular abatement. We just never followed it up with the resolution to actually have the vote.
Any further discussion on this? If there's no, it's a show of hands, a resolution? All those in favor?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
In favor would mean that you are voting to grant the abatement.
Oh, 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 sorry.
Yeah, I thought everybody understood that. If you're voting in favor, you're voting in favor of the abatement. So you're voting in favor of this person not being, if you were going to pass no, then you're not in favor of the abatement, obviously, not in favor of granting a waiver on his taxes. So are we all set now? Everybody fully understands?
Onboard.
Onboard. Everybody all set?
Onboard.
All those in favor, please raise their hand for our resolution number 35-2001, property abatement. All those not in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous.
Sure.
Moving on to discussion items, I think this is yours, Eric, for ten proposal.
Yes.
Four 10-hour days proposal for the town office.
You all had asked me for a resolution for this meeting, but unfortunately, my time ran out. I just couldn't get to it. So what I have done instead, I'll see what I'm passing those on to those, and I wrote up basically a proposal with some pros and cons for how this would work, things that should be considered versus things that would make it easier to work with. So first thing is the four-hour work week itself. The pros for a four-hour work week would be that we're getting extended customer service hours, so our customers don't need to hurry up to get in here at 4:30 or take time off work to get in here by 4:30 or try to get it done on lunch hour. It would also give us the ability to close the office one day per week and decrease our overhead. Studies have shown that you have happier employees, extra time for appointments for employees, reduced employee stress and burnout, increased productivity for clerical and technical employees, and I specify that because there are positions that don't work well on a four, 10-hour shift, but clerical and technical tend to do very well with it. Less commute time for employees also is a side benefit, means burning less fossil fuels when they're driving one less day a week. Less use of employee sick time, less need for overtime due to last-minute customers at the end of the day, and the schedule would remain constant from day to day and week to week with no confusion. The other way we could achieve extended customer hours would be to change one or two days on our week to late hours, but that's more disruptive to employees' home lives and more confusing to customers. On the con side, there's definitely potential for negative public feedback when the office is closed one day per week, at least in the initial stages until people get used to it. Childcare hours can be an issue. We have found with our staff in particular, that's more of a problem at the beginning of the day rather than the end of the day. We can't get extra early hours with the situations that exist right now. Holidays become 10 hours instead of eight, and we do have some contractors that would be working when the office isn't, most notably trash and any of our construction contractors would be working. So those are all things to consider on both sides there. You also asked me to discuss Mondays off versus Fridays off, and I, I know I said personally, as an employee, I like Mondays off, but as a manager, I'm really struggling with it, but let's, let's go through what the reasonings would be. Mondays do make it easier for employees to make personal appointments with doctors, dentists, et cetera, but it would result in closing the office six extra days for Monday holidays, which were observed on Tuesdays. You're not going to get away from that. The employee still gets a holiday by law, so we would either have to give them a floating holiday, which most of them did not seem to be real into, to keep the office open, or you have to close it on Tuesday to give them the holiday off. In addition to the six holidays, there's four holidays per year that change every year, holidays like Veterans Day, a couple others that, Fourth of July, for instance, you don't know what day of the week they're going to fall on, so there's going to be some years when those also fall on a Monday, and that's another additional day off. So this could result on a Monday, up to 10 extra days closed per year due to your holidays. Public Works contracts specifically states a Monday-through-Thursday schedule for their summer work and would have to be changed through negotiation. Also, the employees were largely unfavorable towards the option of changing to a Tuesday through Friday, so I don't know how much traction we would get to get that passed through. If the Public Works summer schedule were to be changed to Tuesday through Friday, there would be a person there for brush drop-off on Friday. On the flip side, though, people doing yard work over the weekend would have to wait an additional day to drop off brush after the weekend. Currently, our Parks Department has said that they have somebody on Fridays till at least noon, and they're more than happy to allow people in on Fridays who want to drop off, even though Public Works isn't there. Right now, council, planning board, and school board meetings are all currently held on Mondays. Monday is usually the busiest day of the week in the town office, and we have lots of interaction with contractors on Mondays.
So why is that a pro?
As far as...
I would think that would be a con as far as the closing off, taking Monday off.
It is a con.
Okay.
I just kind of lumped everything in together. This would be the results between Monday versus Friday.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's our busiest day of the week generally, so I, I heard from, I only heard from one member of the public on this who actually was in favor of Mondays off, but just by the numbers, we tend to have more people walking through the door on Mondays, so I would anticipate it being a bigger deal. If we do two Fridays off, many personal service providers are already closed on Fridays, so it's not as good a day for employees to get their appointments done. But there's only two yearly Friday holidays, which would have to be observed on Thursdays. One would be, your Thanksgiving holiday would result in having Wednesday and Thursday off as well as Friday. What was the other? Oh, Juneteenth will be our new Friday holiday, so that one would result in having one extra day off. So versus where I said on the Monday off, you could potentially have up to 10 extra days closed, you would have up to six on a Friday schedule. Public Works is already working this schedule in the summer, so it's not as big a, we would be working the same time as them, which I see as being a benefit for coordination. to register recreational vehicles before taking off for the weekend would have to plan ahead a little bit more.
Oh, they could go online and do it.
They can do that. But there would be no need to renegotiate existing labor contracts or reschedule existing board meeting schedules. Staff more commonly take Fridays off to take weekend trips than Mondays, and in general, the public adjusts more readily to Friday closures, mostly due to the fact that Friday's the typical day off for government agencies working a four-ten schedule. So again, that's just things to consider, Monday versus Friday. The schedule that I propose, currently, our front office staff is there from seven forty-five to four forty-five with a one hour lunch. That's because they'll give them fifteen minutes to get everything open before the door unlocks, fifteen minutes to shut everything down, count their doors out after we lock the doors in the afternoon. Proposed schedule would be seven forty-five AM to six fifteen PM with a half hour lunch, giving that fifteen minutes at the beginning and the end of the day again. That gives us hours with the public until six PM on a daily basis, but currently, they only have until four thirty. Assessing code hours are currently seven AM to four PM with a one hour lunch. Those would change to seven AM to five thirty PM with a half hour lunch. Tanya, and Tanya, I believe you said seven thirty, but if this is wrong, let me know.
I want it earlier, but that's okay.
Currently, working seven thirty to four with a half hour lunch would be seven thirty to six with a half hour lunch. But again, I'm open to, people who aren't working the front counter, we can try to work it around. I do want to make sure that we always have somebody here, though, when the front office is working, whether that be myself or Tanya or Lisa. Linda is our part-time employee, Linda Bard, currently she works nine to three thirty with a half hour lunch. She would change to an eight to four PM schedule with a half hour lunch, except for when she's covering for somebody else's vacation. And we have the new administrative assistant that we haven't hired yet. My plan is to cross-train that person to also cover the front counter and work them a schedule that's staggered against Linda Bard, so that she would work the later schedule, Linda would work the earlier, and that way, if we need an extra person up front, we've got them. And the trial period would be October first through April first, and on this year's calendar, October first and April first are both Fridays.
So one question I have, it's code enforcement. It'll be on the same schedule, either Monday or Friday off.
Yes.
Now, there's a lot of contractors and people that need to get permits, that they're going to make it hard.
That's why I think Monday is the harder day to do off in a good deal, because, yeah, a lot of our contractors are coming in on Mondays, getting everything that they need set up for the coming week. The homeowner who wants to, you know, build a structure in the backyard or build a deck and needs a permit for it, again, that's kind of like getting your vehicle registered. You need to plan ahead and not try to do it the day before.
Some of these homeowners might be working in all the state, so they come up on a Friday, and it would be closed.
We can still arrange the permits ahead of time. Keep in mind the new website. We're going to be putting permit applications, and you can do those over the web as well, so they would have a method for doing it before they actually came up. Again, you all will be voting on this. For me, I'm going to end up working both ends of the week either way. It's going to happen, so I think it's good for staff, but, you know, whether it will actually work, that's why I'm asking for a trial period rather than saying we just want to move to this permanently. The one problem with this trial period is that it's going into the winter months and that, you know, winter operations are very different from summer when it comes to things like building permits.
I, for one, think you're going to get a lot more backlash from the public being closed Friday. Just my opinion. A lot of people wait to the last minute to do a lot of that business. I would have never thought that Monday is busier than Friday here.
Fridays are kind of a crapshoot, and I've found that in most places I've worked. Sometimes Fridays can be a rush. A lot of times before a holiday weekend, that's when we get Fridays being a real bid rush, and that was part of the reason that I didn't want to propose anything to start as a trial prior to October. I wanted to get the majority of the summer holidays out of the way.
I think as far as the holiday is concerned, Erica, whether it's Friday or Monday, that's a double hand. I don't think we should base our decision on how many holidays we're going to have today. I think in this case, it's how the public will be better served.
How are your employees' reaction here in this building? You must have some feel for that.
I do. There are, the biggest thing that came out of up front was the worry that they couldn't work any earlier, because they are, there are childcare issues for the two full-time staff up front. I did have to point blank ask one of them for an opinion because she doesn't readily give me one. She said she's fine with things the way they are, but she didn't really say anything negative about the four-ten either. The biggest problem I had from the part-time person was worried, being worried about having to work late, but she can cover early hours. She just has a lot of stuff going on personally at home in the evenings and feels that it would be a lot of stress on her to have to work till six o'clock every night.
So there was no majority one way or another?
The majority of staff overall are in favor of going to a four-ten, but to say that it's the majority of my front staff, my front staff is kind of like, yeah, it's a really great idea, we'd love to do it, they're just a little bit worried about how the hours are going to look.
But this is a temporary thing for trial.
Yes.
Well, I think that's important.
Yes.
To do a trial.
Yeah.
But again, if the overall attitude of the staff isn't excited about it, we can leave things well, you know, leave well enough alone and tweak the hours that we have now by this. I think it's more important to be open a little later than open early.
Yeah, I agree.
If people from the most part get out of work between four and five o'clock, four and five thirty, and want to come in and do business.
Well, I mentioned that one way or another, I want to have late hours, whether we do it by a four-ten schedule that keeps it the same across the board, or whether we end up doing it as we do a one day a week that we stay late.
One or two days a week, yeah.
But, you know.
Stop late and come and do it.
Yeah, and I mentioned that to staff, too. I don't, that one didn't get a whole lot of, there were no happy faces on that one, but I told them one way or another, we're going to, we're going to have some late hours, because I don't think it's a, I don't think it's fair to the majority of our people who work that they're scrambling to get in here by four thirty. A lot of people work in Augusta or they work, you know, somewhere that's not right across the river or right here in Winslow, and trying to get here by four thirty is a challenge.
Four thirty doesn't work. It just doesn't work.
I think that a lot of people, I know that when I come in here between eleven thirty and one o'clock, there's usually somewhat of a, Tanya, is that, there's usually a line out of that office at some point in time at lunchtime. So I think a lot of people would say, because they don't get out, they don't want to rush over here at four fifteen and then not get their work done, so I see there's advantage to the later hours, if that's the case, it might take the noon time rush, the eleven to one rush out of it and kind of meld it through to the later hours of the evening. A lot of people want to get home, too, so I think, and I think Peter's right, the big is it's a trial, and we need to see, keep track of what our traffic flow is now and what the traffic flow is after and the things of the people.
Now, if you're going to roll.
I would be willing to try it if it's a majority of the employees want to try it. I think it's worth a try.
Have you looked at underlying communities that have this system?
Yes, I have given you all emails from the surrounding communities that responded to me, the last meeting. Is it Vassalboro? It's still in the, it's either Vassalboro or Sydney that's close by. They are doing, they're doing four nines and a four.
Both.
Yeah.
New business in both, and they both have extended hours.
Yeah, so, but they're staying open nine, which in our case, if we still open the date, doesn't get us as late, and then everybody still has to come in on Friday for at least half a day, but that's a schedule that seems to be working okay for them. I've also talked to a couple of towns that aren't right by us, but they're doing four nines period and paying everybody for thirty-six, which I'm sure is not a popular option because that cuts four hours of service right out of it.
Yeah.
And I don't want to cut anybody's pay by four hours either, so.
But you could down the road get somebody that wanted to stay later than the others and have a volunteer take that particular slot, you know? That's always possible, yeah.
We just don't want to have anybody in the building by themselves, especially not handling money.
Well, you'll be here.
I'll be in here.
Okay.
So which day did the staff really lean to, Monday or Friday off?
I think most of them thought there were problems with Monday just operationally. The feedback I was getting between department heads and line staff was that, you know, well, all these things are going on on Mondays. One of the big ones that was brought up was all the meetings that we currently have on Mondays. And Fridays, I think Public Works in particular really doesn't want to go to a Monday off. They've already got their four-ten schedule in the summers. Part of it is what people are used to, and I think a lot of people, just when they're thinking of taking a day off, they think of taking Friday. And before I had Mondays off, I never would have thought of taking Monday off as being a great day either. I just found that for the way the weekend runs, it actually ends up being a more restful day to take, but I didn't, I don't think we got any more feeling than that, other than people just saying that there were operational issues with Mondays.
With the holidays off.
Yeah, we thought of the holiday issue.
Why are we concerned with Public Works not keeping their Monday through Friday schedule?
Because the request was to have Public Works be on the same schedule as we were in the last meeting.
Why is that even relevant to this office building versus Public Works?
Yeah.
I guess I don't understand the relevance of that.
I don't understand either, because they've already got their setup already.
I don't know if they were.
It's a different contract.
It's absolutely a different contract. We do coordinate with each other.
Oh, yeah.
It would mean, you know, Paul and I technically have three days to work with each other instead of four. I would prefer to see us on the same schedule, but is there an absolute reason why we have to be? No, that was a request that came out of this meeting last time.
And you think if this building decided to take Mondays off, you think the union would say no?
I don't have anybody in the union in this building.
No, 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 I mean the Public Works, if we went to Public Works and said, look.
Well, they would have to vote on it as a membership, so it's not that the union, I mean, the union business agent could be in total agreement with it, but if the union membership didn't vote for it, it wouldn't pass.
They'd have to ratify that.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Okay, well, I think you're right. I don't think it makes sense to have Public Works on one schedule and the town office on another, just what you just said. You and Paul would have three days to do business. I don't think that would work. Are you right?
No, I don't. I don't think, I think it would be, no. And not only that, but also with code enforcement, I think Paul would have, you know, a lot of times have issues that they need to coordinate with.
Oh, Paul. It depends what the people want. I mean, the public, as we have learned, will adapt.
It's the workers that we're concerned about the most, on my end.
And Paul.
The public, too.
Oh, yeah, but, but.
I think that.
You don't want to turn over the front office seat just because you want to work them two or three extra hours a day, you know? If they're happy doing what they're doing, you don't want to totally disrupt their lives just to make that change.
Oh, well, I would hope this would be driven by the employees, is that four hour work day would be driven by the employees.
That's why I asked that question.
Like I said, the majority of the employees do want it, but you have the concerns up front. There's one person that said she's happy the way things are. There's another full-time person who really wants the four tens, she's just concerned about making sure that her childcare issue is taken care of.
Would it work better for that person if she could come in at eight, six thirty?
Yeah, we've discussed that. I just need to make sure the office is up and ready to go by eight AM, and that, you know, wouldn't be the first time in the world that we had one person doing that. I just don't want, I would want other people also here by eight, you know?
I think we're going to go, start going around in circles again.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
We've started asking the same question here.
Explain to you what the people that work here want to do.
Yeah.
Right. Do you want to then have a?
Well, at this point, and we said at last meeting, let her come up with the schedule, meaning Erica.
Yeah.
Let her go with it for that trial period, and then we'll look at it again.
So you want to vote on that next meeting, that trial? Because it has to be someone.
It would be, yeah, there would have to be, I didn't write up a resolution for it because, like I said, I did, I ran out of time for this meeting, so it would be a vote next time around. Now, I have polled the employees, that's what we talk about every single time we have our staff meeting, so I feel pretty confident in who's uncomfortable with it and who really wants to go that way. You know, again, when I've had, some people don't like to say anything in front of anybody else, but they've come to me individually and talked about, you know, I like this idea, but I'm concerned about this aspect of it.
And we really don't have to go from October first to April first. We can actually adjust that. If it doesn't start to work out after thirty days or sixty days, we can change it. You know, we're locked, I don't think we're going to be locked in.
I would say if you don't give it at least sixty, you need an adjustment period. It will be an adjustment.
At six months, you don't, you know.
Ninety days, at least.
But do we need, do we need a resolution for you to do the trial? Or is this just a trial, it's not going to be anything set in stone until after the fact?
Like, because if we vote on it, it kind of makes it permanent. And you could do that.
Well, for it to become permanent, it has to become part of the personnel policy, so I haven't put any changes forth in the personnel policy. We've got some other things we need to put in there, like adding the Juneteenth holiday and things like that, but I want it to do it once and not.
But what I'm saying, because you're on a trial basis, October first to April first, so right there, you wouldn't put it into the policy change because it isn't permanent.
Right.
So just like Jeff said, you could actually, if you really wanted to or not, fire this up, see how it flies. If it flies good, hey, we'll go ahead and adopt it.
This is what I was suggesting, it's just a suggestion, is come up with a plan, I know you have this, but come up with another plan with a permanent plan for the, for next week, and we can have a discussion again, and you can have a show of hands if you do like that.
Next month.
Next month.
Just say, I'm not doing it next week.
Next month. Would that be satisfactory at that point in time?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is pretty much my plan, but.
I don't think after looking at it, I know we've discussed this in the past, I'm not comfortable with any, making any, like, giving you the go-ahead right now to do it. I think I need to study it a little bit. I need to digest it a little bit, and I need to think about the pros and cons for another month, and then next week, if we look at this and, you know, this is really the plan next month, and this is the plan, then we can at least at that point in time say that the majority of the councils and go ahead and do it, you know? I mean, I don't know if you even need really council approval for this.
I'm not sure, but I do either, but I like to defer to you all when it comes to something that's going to affect the public.
You've just got our feelings.
Come up with something. Next meeting, we will take a show of hands, whatever it takes. Let's get them all rolling.
Okay. Let's move on to the next discussion, I think it was the junior high?
Yeah, yes, that.
Is that it?
That was Jerry's request to discuss, and I think Peter kind of already addressed some of it.
Junior high? The discussion right now is junior high.
Right now, we don't have, we've got a building sitting there, empty, going to be used by the school for daycare next school year. How long will, we need to figure out, when are we going to know? Because here it is, August, if we're going to have a, if we're going to. Because here it is, August, if we're gonna have a, if we're gonna get rid of that building or keep it?
Are we gonna heat it all winter for daycare?
Well, I think, Erica, do you want to address that right now with the heating portion of it, or...
Well, I asked Peter to come tonight so that we could have a, because I knew Jerry wanted to discuss this. You know, originally, we were saying we have no idea what's gonna go on in the fall, so we wanted to keep it open as an insurance policy. Peter and I had discussed how to pay for it, and because we want to also use that COVID money for that expansion...
Elementary.
We didn't want to completely deplete those funds. So I agreed that the town would pay half and the school would pay half. Peter, I don't know if you see any changes coming down the pike or...
I don't, but just to clarify that, both sides paying half using these federal dollars, not local dollars?
Correct.
Yeah.
Given that, and just to mention, on the ARPA funding, that would be our side of it, the state is in another thirty-day extension, because they still are not ready to pass the funds down. They are still working with a third-party vendor that's going to run the web portal that will allow us to request funding. So there's still a lot of questions about when and how we will get those funds.
What are we looking for, the amount of money, half and half, total, and then...
I was able to go back to the oil, people that we bid the oil with, we weren't able to get the same bid price that we were able to get. We've got oil at a really lower price earlier this summer. We weren't able to get the same price, but we were able to come in around sixty thousand dollars to do to that twenty-five thousand gallons is what was needed for this building. Let me just, if I could just take a moment, Ray, and go back to Jerry and Ben's comments. The council graciously said that the building would be available to us in the event that we had an emergency situation this year with all of us. The only thing that is constant with COVID is change. Every single day, there's change. I mean, I could open my laptop right now, and I could find something else that's different than the rules and regulations. It changes all the time based on what's happening. And so as an insurance policy, we wanted to keep the building in the event that we have to go back to hybrid learning, because we don't have any place to put our students in hybrid learning to even get a hybrid situation of every other day. We had to put the entire sixth grade here last year, along with some other classes, if that should happen. And I don't know if it's gonna happen, but if it should happen, paying thirty thousand dollars for oil to heat this building is a lot cheaper than trying to find modular units and set those up at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the year. That just makes no sense. So that's why, that's why we wanted this group graciously, the council offered for us, to have this as an insurance policy, and we took advantage of it, and I thank you for doing it.
But now daycare is not part of the school budget, it's not a part of the town budget.
That is correct.
Okay, but so where, if we hold it open, in case you need it, that is one thing, but to say we're gonna keep it open for daycare, we have nothing to do with daycare. That's a private organization altogether.
We're keeping it open for the school's use.
I understand that.
The end.
I understand.
The end. The daycare is sliding in there, because he needs the room the daycare has been using at the elementary school. So they're gonna use some room.
We have one classroom on the backstage that's available. That daycare was running their morning and afternoon program in, and then they would spread out another class.
You know, after school?
Yeah.
Yep.
So what we need then at this point is, we need every, we need every nook and cranny. And so that room is gonna become a room that I can use for testing behind the stage, or I can use for other resources. And then I can remove the students from inside the building, so that I don't have all of the social distancing requirements that I need to worry about. Since we were heating the building, I thought it would be a nice opportunity to say, just stay here, just stay here. Because the other thing with that was this, Ben, because they're staying here, you can now offer more families the opportunity to put, for the daycare, which they didn't have before. I think she's got a list of fifty-five people that she's gonna be able to serve, which is a good thing for the families in your community, then get back to work.
And Peter, daycare is using, I would imagine they're using the cafeteria of the...
All of our facilities.
How many of the, how much of the junior high are they actually using?
It's one wing, because you have to have them on certain floors, just one wing downstairs.
Okay, okay.
The other thing that was bounced around, Ben, was we'll winterize it. We can't just, we just can't set it off.
I understand that. Totally understand that.
So to winterize it would have cost more money than to heat it.
Totally understand that. But my concern was incorporating daycare into the school or town in business, a separate entity. You know, that's what I wanted to make clear.
Yeah, we're not, we're not. We're not. They're gonna use the building that we have decided, between the municipal side and the school side, to keep it.
To allow them if they need it.
To allow them if they need it.
Yeah, I understand.
Do you foresee, Peter, like any outstanding maintenance issues when you're heating it this summer? Obviously, we haven't done a lot of maintenance on that building for ten years, but, you know, you're, obviously, you're gonna have the furnace looked at, if, I mean, you're gonna, if any electrical problems come in, we'll have to address those, those will be what?
The only thing we keep up at this point, Ray, is health and safety measures. So we make sure the health and safety measures are up to speed, we don't put any money into the building.
Right, right, but buildings need maintenance, buildings, everything has a cost, unexpected costs sometimes. Sometimes it can be ten thousand dollars, sometimes it can be thirty thousand, or, you know, the longer we keep, and I think we need to do that this year, but I'm just saying this, this could be additional cost, too, and that we would have to come up with some type of...
Might be.
And I think the other question we have is for the council is, is, you know, Erica, I hate to put you on the spot again, but as far as, you know, we always were kind of waiting for the environmental study. Do you have any update on the environmental study?
I do not. I have to reach out to Craig Wilson again. I have not heard from him.
So I think the next question after the environmental study is, you know, the council has, has to come up with, and I know we need the environmental study, but also this year is some options that we have again for the junior high. And I think that's gonna take some discussion and some engineering where options would be available as to options with the junior high school. I think we have to answer those questions in lieu of waiting for the environmental assessment to come in as to how much that building's gonna take to come down. So there's things we can do parallel to the report, and I think we need to discuss those options also. Does anybody have any discussions on that also, is how we want to go forward with, you know, tearing down the whole building, or maybe saving part of the building, or maybe doing engineering?
We can't do any of that until the environmental study is done.
Yeah, and the environmental...
Because you can't get prices.
And the other one. We need the two studies done before we can make any decisions.
Everything would be hypothetical.
Yes.
Okay.
So...
At this point, we have to have those two studies done, but again, we've, we have committed this building for another twelve months to the silverback. We know we have to deal with it going forward.
Might be longer than twelve months.
Well, we don't know.
We don't know.
We know.
So again, in the future, we'll deal with it.
Okay, sounds good. So is there any other discussion on the junior high right now?
I have to wait till twenty-four, Peter said.
That's what I was thinking.
What does it point to, Peter?
Well, Peter, just very quickly, I mean, if we did have to rent modules, we're looking at one-twenty to one-sixty, in my math.
You are.
Okay.
And where do you put them?
Is there...
Well, bucking off. That being said, this is still, this is still the way to go. I just want the public to know that, that we're not, we're not wasting any of the public's money, we're in fact saving it. Because I agree with you, changes are coming by the minute.
And they are...
It's a good idea to keep it open, to keep the options open, and for a variety of reasons why, we need to keep that facility open at least for the winter of this coming winter.
Yeah.
And I think after we get the environmental study and look at those type of things and options, if you can move forward after that, but not until then.
Exactly.
As Jeff said, just some...
And COVID's gonna dictate this.
Make a motion, Richard.
Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Erica.
I'm sorry, just one other thing I wanted to mention to all of you, just for informational reasons. I will be away from the office from Wednesday through Friday this week. I'll be up in Sugarloaf at the manager's conference, so I will be trying to keep up with anything anybody needs.
Can we vote on it?
No, sir. That was an executive decision. But...
You can't leave.
I'm on the professional development committee for the MT CMA, and since I was on the committee, I kind of had to go. But it should be a very good opportunity for networking with other managers, and there's a lot of training that's gonna happen over those three days, so I'm actually pretty excited about it. But just to let you all know, I will be hard to get ahold of Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Lee, do you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, to remind everyone about the four Halifax days coming up on the twenty-eighth.
Those in my report.
Hold on, I mean for the general public, to remind everyone that we're having a celebration.
Yep.
Erica?
Yes, sir.
How about having a discussion item on Brown Tail March?
Today?
Not today, but today.
If you want it on the agenda, you can have it on the agenda for next meeting.
Yes.
Is there any other further discussion or any other questions? And we have a motion on the floor right now for a termite, seconded by Jeff, forward first by Ben, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor, raise your hand. The meeting is in. Thank you.